Um, yeah. Alright, so, uh, is it okay if I move Christina's over there too?
No, that's Gus's.
What's Gus's?
Oh, that's Gus's? I haven't touched it.
Don't touch my basket.
Alright, sorry. Did you put your stuff?
Can I put my basket over here?
Sure.
Okay.
Todd, be quiet. Turn off your camera.
Did you hear what you said, Todd?
I did not hear it.
Oh, but you heard me.
This is not good. Just do that.
Todd, can you hear me?
I, I can hear you, yeah.
So, these are working?
The mic's a bit, no, the mic, there's an external mic here.
Oh, I see, I see. So he can only hear us through that mic? Uh, well, until these go live?
Yeah, but that's pretty, it's pretty sound. So Todd, I, Todd, I'm gonna present screen so you can see the agenda.
Oh, thanks.
Hey, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Um, so we have just come out of executive session, um, at six fifty-three to discuss a land sale and personnel discussion. Um, can I have a motion to bring the meeting to, Bob is first, Naomi second, all in favor? Okay. So at this point, let's do the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic, and to its citizens, under our individual liberty and justice for all. So, tonight is a study session. Um, meetings are designed for the purpose of having administrative updates to the Board of Education. There are no public comments at study session meetings. Residents may attend the next scheduled business meeting on our, on our, what would say? This would be, I don't know.
November tenth.
Thank you, November tenth, Dr. Robinson, and/or contact via email at voe@shenschools.org with any comments or questions. All questions come into the Office of Public Information Officer and are shared with the Board and/or Superintendent as appropriate. Policy questions, concerns are typically addressed by the Board President. Operational questions, concerns are typically addressed by the Superintendent and/or designated. I need to stop printing mine at home, so I do the wrong dates. Okay, so, um, tonight, uh, as we start to, the next agenda topic here is our focus topic discussion. And I think I'm going to lead off, only because we have a few topics tonight that I'm sure are going to, uh, I think a few people are online listening, I'm sure. Um, as we set out after our community conversation, by the way, on Saturday was phenomenal, uh, I think we had more there than we normally would have had in person. Um, so I said to Dr. Robinson, maybe going forward, we think about mixing that up, um, maybe doing a few online and, and in person, because we definitely pick up more people. And people that have never gone to one before, that really made up most of the attendance that day. So on the heels of that meeting, uh, and Dr. Wood had explained that this was the time, um, as explained before, that families would get the notification and questionnaire that, you know, would they be returning and are they changing from CBL to in-person or vice versa? And there was a timeframe. So, um, the Board started getting emails, a lot of questions, a lot of concerns about parents. Um, it's too lo, it was too short of a timeframe. They feel October thirtieth is too short of a timeframe. Um, they feel going forward that we are, that the, they are making decisions from October all the way to June is too long of a span. They want to be able to break that up at some point and, and make that, thanks, Gus, and make, be able to make those dis, uh, decisions as they go on in the year, because family decisions change, uh, work decisions change. Uh, we don't know what's going to happen after, uh, even after November, what's going to happen after December. We've got the holidays coming up, a lot can change in a second, and we've seen that. Uh, it can go good or bad. So, um, we were fielding a lot on the Board and district leadership in the, in the last day or so. So, Dr. Robinson is well aware, as well as Dr. Wood, on a lot of those questions. And I think we want to clarify a few of terms, uh, timeframes, and what is meant historically, what is, what we portrayed in those, in all those, uh, PowerPoints that we did, um, for the public tonight to have that discussion.
Sure, um, and I'm also gonna have, um, Dr. Wood engage in the conversation a little bit as well. So, um, listen, if you don't mind, just come up. So, for, for the Board, the Board knows as a part of our reopening plan, um, we spent a lot of time talking about the, the, Elizabeth's gonna be here.
Oh, alright.
The completely virtual option, this is gonna, we're, 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 we're all six feet apart, so it's for the public purpose, we want the public to know that. Hi, Grace, good to see you. Um, you can scoot down one more if you want to, yes. Um, Grace is our student rep, so just wanted to make sure she was accommodating. So, so for, from a public perspective, we spent a lot of time talking about the CBL, the Completely Virtual Learning Option. And spent a lot of time preparing that option so that it can be a solid option for students and families who, who, who made that selection. Um, while anecdotal at this point, we're in the process of trying to collect some information, otherwise, it has gone very well for, for, for students, not only elementary students, but also secondary students. And I know personally myself, I try to engage students in those conversations, students, and not necessarily in parents, because sometimes it's the parent's perspective might be a little bit different than the student's perspective. Um, and so we spent a lot of time trying to make sure we did it, that we get it right, based upon all the information we have. We also said at that point, that we wanted parents to commit elementary level to a trimester, and I wanted to, to clarify that term. This year is the first time we're using the word trimester. In typically in past years, the school, um, elementary was broken up into, into four marking periods. That became problematic in many ways, because in some cases, after the first marking period, there wasn't much for the teachers to engage in parents about their kids anyway. And so teachers wanted to have a longer duration of time to be with kids, to see how kids were progressing, to work with kids, to be able to have legitimate conversations, um, with, with, with students and families about their student progress at the elementary level. And so at the same time, we're also revamping the elementary report card. So, the timing was great. This was last year, by the way. Last year meaning last school year. However, with COVID, we couldn't do the transitions, and we didn't do the transition, because we weren't in school in the spring. We weren't physically in school. So the trimester model kicked in, and we said in the opening documents, reopening documents, that we wanted parents to commit for trimester, for this trimester meeting right now. That would have been the ideal. I said, would have been. While we had a large majority of people committed, we had many people still trickle in and trickle out. Those trickles, while I'm using the word trickle, and it sounds minimal, those trickles are major hiccups, because when you think about in-person, we are limited to a capacity of eighteen kids in most classes. And so we have people trickling in and trickling out, impacting in-person class size. On the virtual side, we have been trying to, to have what I'm gonna call reasonable sizes, so anywhere from twenty-four to about twenty-six or so, um, in the virtual classes, because to say a virtual teacher can have forty kids is grossly unfair. It's unfair to the teachers, unfair to those kids. And so we don't wanna have a reasonable class-sized experience for virtual kids. And so I think people need to understand, and so our initial commitment, asking people to be committed for a trimester, wasn't about we are being so awful and he, and forcing people to make decisions. We were thinking, what's in the best interest of the education of all the kids we're trying to educate?
How long is a trimester?
So trimester goes until about second week in December.
Okay.
And then it kicks in, and then it goes to, what, February, and then?
March twenty-third would be the start of the second trimester.
Second trimester.
So those, that, those kids, if they were making that change, would be back in for one week in March, April, May, and however long we're in school for June.
So not going from October to June? We break up again and, and ask again, would we?
So, 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 so let me, let me bring that piece up. So, 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 so here we are now in October, and people say, it seems so early. Well, it's actually not early at all for any of our processes that we're doing, because even tonight, we're gonna be talking about budget processes in October. All these processes take time. Secondly, people don't realize that the month of November and December chopped up significantly with holidays. And we probably have about four, five solid weeks of school in those months. And so subsequently, the correspondence that went out to parents was, yes, ideally, ideally, we would love to know, because quite frankly, you, kids have been in these different situations now for five weeks. So it's not five days, five weeks. And, and many cases, parents have, have cemented their, via childcare options, their work situations. And so we want to be able to say, if you know then, that you, based upon your experiences so far, you're, you're good with my kids staying in virtual, I'm good with my kids being in person, or you know what, you know, my kid's having a tough time right now, or quite frankly, I know my job situation is gonna change significantly after the new year, and so because I'm anticipating that, there's a good likelihood that I'm probably gonna be kept to have my kid go back to in-person, whatever those factors are, there can be many, many factors. The point that I think people have to realize that, while people feel that's an imposition on them, it's not about imposition, it's about all of us trying to get information so we can structure the education provisions to kids in a fair, fair way. Because what we can't have, or what we're trying to avoid, is a parent who wants his or her child to stay in virtual, or wants his or her child to stay in person, and as a result of the decision of someone else, their child gets bumped all over the place. For, for a parent who's like, hold on, I didn't make any decision about my child, and now you're telling me my child can no longer be in Miss Stevens' in-person class because of these other factors. So we want to try to get information, so we can try to, one, minimize that type of bump in effect, two, so we plan for capacity. So if we have, for example, if we have X number of kids coming from virtual back to in-person, that teacher or teachers who were doing the virtual, those people have to shift back to in-person to teach the in-person class. We can't go out and say magically hire two more teachers just because we have a shift. And so, so we have to look at those kind of things. So we have to shift back to in-person at, at a particular grade level, pick-up grade level, and just for compensation purposes. Say, say right now, it's, 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 it's second grade, and, and, and I'm trying to do a quick math, and, and three times eighteen grades, do the math for me real quick. Um, and we have X number of, of those kids right now, and all of a sudden we get ten more kids at that grade level. All of a sudden, we can't drop those ten, we can't socialize those ten kids across those three graders, it's already matched out. So now, we're gonna have to come up maybe with a fourth section. And so now, instead of having three sections of eighteen and one of ten, we may very well try to see what other needs we have to fill that section and create a greater balance. And so if I'm getting a fourth section, where am I getting that teacher from? That teacher has to be someone who is teaching in a virtual space, which means now potentially collapsing some virtual sections to get the capacity to teach the in-person section. So I share that with you, because, yes, we all understand the, the, the decision that parents are making. And we're all making the same decision. And the decision is, how do we structure education so that your child has the best possibility to be successful without a lot of moving parts? And so, so, so the trimester piece, we wanna get information, yes, ideally, ideally. And I say ideally, that if we have parents say, yep, you know what, based upon this, I'm good for the whole year. We have parents saying, you know what, I, I, I could commit to, to, to March, but be honest with you, there are certain circumstances, I don't know right now, that if I know if I'm gonna be good to the end of the year. Okay, that's fine. That's better than saying, I can't tell you anything. Because if I can't tell you anything, don't help us with making the decision.
So, this is not going to the end of June. This question that just came out is not going to, you would bring this question out then, for, at the end of the second trimester?
Well, we're gonna have to bring that out anyway, based upon what the situation is after December.
Okay.
Because, because here's the deal, people are, by the way, that's what I mentioned before, people are making these trickling decisions all the time. Because one of the things that we, and, and here's, and here's another piece that people don't realize, and Elizabeth will confirm, kind of where we are with some, we have situations where people want to make the transition, and we're telling them, we don't have the capacity right now. You're pretty much on a waiting list to make that transition either way, because what we can't have is all of a sudden, you know, create a situation that it's, it's, it's either moving kids around, or we don't simply don't have the capacity. So we have to wait till one come in, one go out, or, here's a piece that people also gonna have to wrap their heads around. The whole concept of my homeschool is quickly becoming a foreign concept, because particularly in the virtual space, if we have to collapse sections, you can't say, well, I only want to go to virtual school with kids from Scannell or Tassago. You may very well just be going with kids in your elementary grade. And quite frankly, even in the sisters, the, the, the in-person piece, we always try to maximize the sister school concept. Let me explain that, because people may understand. We call the adjoining schools Scannell, Tassago sister schools, Aranda, Carrigan sister schools, Oranjan, Shatacon sister schools. So in that concept, we try to, as much as we can, if you have to shift kids between schools, stay within the same compound, because that helps us with transportation. There's buses are coming to one place, it doesn't matter, are you going walking right, or you walking right? So it helps us with trans, the transportation is a huge component of this. And so even when we start looking at the potential of collapsing, particularly in-person, we're gonna have to go beyond this sister school and start looking at contiguous boundaries. So for instance, if people look at the district map of our elementary school, the boundaries that, that feed into different schools of certain neighborhoods, and certain schools have contiguous boundaries, what we call buffer areas, so to speak, then we start looking at that, and so we have to reroute transportation to say, instead of this bus picking up on this route, this bus might be picking up on this route, because it's going to that, taking these kids up, taking this school. So we also have to look at that piece of it, well, how much we can do that without having, again, a huge disruption in the transportation piece. So I share all these things with you, because people say, well, why do we need to know in advance? Because there's a lot of literally moving parts, that we want to get information, analyze, run many, many what-if scenarios before we make a decision. And the decision is the one that's going to be the least interrupted interruption for kids and the education piece of it, the most effective for transporting kids coming in. And in literally in that order, because we wanna minimize disruption, because we know once the kids get in the flow, teachers get in the flow of kids, kids get in a certain routine, certain environment, we want to try to sustain that as much as we possibly can.
So Oliver, um, I saw the news story today, there was a news channel that played an article with some parents on it, and we see the emails. To be very clear, and I wanna make sure I understand this, the email that went out was asking parents what their plan is as of right now, and there will in fact be another opportunity, as you said, after the first of the year, to make changes, again, if necessary, depending on the environment and, and how things are.
So the, the email asks for both December until the end of June. Um, and so the email asked for both. Did we say, in strange way, whatever, at this point, we want information right now that we could plan ahead to figure out how it's gonna look like for the next several months? Because quite frankly, probably the biggest transition is going to be right now, into the next trimester. Because parents who, who thought that virtual school was one-way, and, you know, and I'm not my term, as I ran into a gentleman the other day, he was kinda like, you know, Doc, it was buyer's remorse. And, and I was like, literally, at, at Home Depot, when I was having buyer's remorse, doing nothing against Home Depot, um, just bought the wrong color paint. Uh, but anyway, and, and so, so, and I was like, why he said it, he was kinda like, I didn't realize how much time, because he was the stay-at-home parent, how much time I had to be there with my kids, and I'm trying to work at home. I work at home, but, he's like, I'm in the same space with my kids all the time, all day, and I did not think about that. When we thought about this, we thought it was convenient for us, because he works from home, and having the kids home, he thought was convenient. He's kinda like, right now, guess what? I'm glad I ran into you, because how can I make a decision to come back? This was last weekend, and I was kinda like, well, I gotta tell you, if, if you could send us the love note, but it may not be right away for us to transition you back. And so, so I share that, because those are, that we have those realities that we have to contend with. And so, so I, I hope parents realize that this is not the big, bad district trying to blow down their, their house. This is the district trying to say, how do we get as much information as we possibly can to make the best decisions for the large majority of kids moving forward, recognizing that some parents, simply whatever circumstances, won't be able to say yea or nay. And if they don't say anything, we can assume they don't stay in the situation that they are. And hopefully then, we in the process right now, we've been trying to see what capacity we have when people transition. But again, the key part of that is, you may try, particularly if you're coming from, from, from virtual back to in-person, you may not be going to your, your neighbor's kid's third grade teacher that your neighbor has down the street, because the capacity might be someplace else that we can accommodate. And so people have to remember that our job is to provide education to kids using the resources that we have. And that's what we're trying to do. I mean, cut through the chase, that's what we're trying to do. And for parents who are out there, who simply say, I don't, I can't make the decision because of A, B, and C reason, we respect that. But what we can't have are people making these gross blanket things of the district being irresponsible, the district, we're what I, quite frankly, I'm professionally offended, because I know all the time, so many people put into getting us here, and so many people put into planning forward to make it better as we move forward, because we're learning from the lessons of the first implementation. And one of the lessons from the first implementation is that, guess what? As you all know, the state gave us a window of weeks for us to turn this whole thing around and make it happen, once we can be able to approve our plans. July seventeenth, I think, was the date, that the state found and said, you could approve your plans by June, by July thirtieth. And we scrambled to do all those kind of things. Good thing we did a lot of pre-work prior to that. And now, we have opportunity to plan in advance. And so that's what we're trying to do, plan in advance. So, so, so if there is true, if there's truly a parent out there who's saying, I, I just, I don't have enough information, or my circumstances is somewhat tenuous, and I don't wanna commit one way or whatever, that's understandable. But that's not the majority of folks, and we wanna get as majority of the information, so we can make a good decision. That's all we want then. That's, this is very simply that. And, and we respect that, we respect that people gonna make decisions all the time. Things happen in people's lives, their circumstances change, and we try to be as accommodating as we can when those things happen, and people bring those things to our attention. But it's not a deliberate act.
I just wanted to, the people who did their path of decision in their mind of their plan, and there are some that are, I'll check that. Um, but we did not create this current environment, and we are doing the best that we can to serve the majority of people. There are always gonna be people that are gonna be unhappy. There are always gonna be people that feel like they've been slighted. Um, and that's unfortunate, but it's not intentional, and it's, it's for the good of the order, and the good of the masses, that we're trying to get as much information. And I just hope the community can at least understand that. They don't have to agree with it, but they're gonna understand that.
So if we're looking at that timeframe of October thirtieth, right, so that gives them till next week, um, and I know that we have discussed this, this is on the PowerPoints that we had, I think there are some parents that felt that, again, they were left out of decision-making. And I, I, I don't, I don't, it wasn't major decisions that we were, this was part of this plan to begin with. Am I wrong, or am I?
Yeah, all along, we had said that if you're committing to completely virtual, we're asking that you commit for the first trimester, because we knew we were not going to be, and, and let me go back to, first of all, we would always like to be able to say yes, a- anytime we can. We would love to be able to say, yes, you can come in, yes, you can go out. That's our, that we would love to be able to do that. Um, the, the challenge is exactly as Dr. Robinson explained, like, we anticipate, and this is ver, is a very painful thing to have to say, we anticipate having to make changes to kids who did not ask for any sort of change in December, for our K-five students. And a perfect example is where we've had outward, like, people leaving to go to Completely Virtual, if we had four sections, and they were previously at, say, sixteen apiece, and they are now down in the twelve range, we are probably going to have to take one of those four teachers, move that teacher to CBL, and the twelve remaining students are going to be distributed, redistributed across, and those kids have asked for no change, those families have asked for no change, but we have a footprint of staffing that we use, we have to use those teachers. And it will mean it, if they are redistributed. This is a unique challenge at the elementary level, because the Completely Virtual sections are separate sections. At grade six through twelve, they are attached to the class that those kids would have been in if they were in school, and the teacher's livestream. It is, we thought about this, and we are still wondering, long-term, if, however long we're in this situation, twenty-one, twenty-two, is that the way to look at elementary? I, I don't know. That raises a lot of questions, because to ask a kindergarten teacher or a kindergarten student, my teacher is now paying attention to the computer and not the kids on the carpet, or the kids at their desk, right? It's, that is a hard place to live in both worlds. But the, it is not, I go back to, we would love to be able to say yes every single time. We have had a migration, just in round numbers of about a hundred students either coming in or going out, since we asked for the firm at the beginning of September. Actually, we'd asked for it several weeks before that. But since, in the first, I should actually say, in the first three weeks of school, we had a migration in and out, just at the elementary, of about a hundred students. And it has led to some serious imbalances in our sections. We have parents, as was said, on a waiting list to go in. And so we're saying, and, and we had published that October thirtieth date, so by that October thirtieth date, please let us know. And we're gonna take the month of November to minimize the impact on all students, to try to make the most logical placements possible, to work, as Dr. Robinson said, with transportation. Okay, we don't have room in this school, but could we get them in the neighboring track? Because the parent really needs transportation, and we don't have room, where are the bus goes? So it, it's trying to ease into what could be a significant change, which is what we would hope to minimize for consistency. And if we have to endure that in the second week of December, and we won't know until we get all of the responses from our families, if, if that is what our month of November is, is planning how to minimize the impact, we are just saying, please commit for as, as much as you humanly can, now through June, so that we don't need to do this all again, the last week of March, and potentially disrupt the education and the connection between the classroom teacher and the students again in March. So we're saying, now, we also know, there are going to be things that come up that parents could not possibly have foreseen. My employer said I was going to be able to have the whole year off, you know, to work from home, and now my employer has said, now we all have to come back in. My spouse is, um, a, a worker someplace else, they have no flexibility, I really need, but we are going to set up a process where we address that. It is the, I'm unsure, I, I don't know what to do, those are the ones we're asking really to commit. Um, maybe your child is diagnosed with a serious medical issue in January or February, and they were in person, and the pediatrician recommends that the child goes virtual. We are going to accommodate that to the very best of our ability when, when we're able. But the impact, it, it is a domino effect, and that is really why we asked for this commitment.
So, uh, thank you for saying that. And I, I think, I just wanted to, um, I, I'm trying to, to, to summarize this for me. So I don't see it as a moving target. You did back, um, when we were first talking about this with the several streams, explained that it would be through the first trimester. I, in my opinion, or what I believe, is that people did not know what that deadline date was to, to start reporting. And so they feel, oh, we have to decide a month and a half roughly, ahead of the, you know, the very end of the trimester. But I, I also agree with you. I believe it makes sense, because the reason, in the, you know, when people had to make this decision back in, in August, they didn't feel they had enough time. And I, I suspect that could be why there was so much movement, when you're seeing a hundred coming in, a hundred going out. Um, and, and the numbers that I see in the presentation that we're gonna see later today, they're all higher, so it looks like more have gone out than have come in. So, but I think it's because they felt rushed, they, decisions were made early on, and then they changed them. And so I'm hoping that by giving them more time to plan, to think this, to think about, you know, the first trimester, and I'm happy to hear that it's, it's not through the end of June. You're asking, if, if you can commit, that would be great, but if you can't, then we're asking that you commit to the next trimester at this point, so that we can plan accordingly. That makes sense to me. That's, that's, that's the right move. So, you're not trying to force people out, you're just trying to, uh, which was another comment that was made, that people felt their hands were being forced, and so they felt the district was trying to pull everyone back in. And I don't, I don't believe that. I don't believe that at all. I, but I do see that, that people do need time, you need time, the district needs time to plan. And, and it does make sense to do it this way.
And, and I would just add to that, thank you, that it's going to take us weeks to figure out all the services. It's not just making that classroom teacher match, it's It's how do we now deliver English as a new language service? How do we deliver speech therapy? How do we deliver special education services when that student was previously getting the special education services in a vert- from a virtual teacher? So it, it's, it's magnified beyond, but yes, exactly. And, and we are asking, we, we would like people to commit now through the rest of the year. I, I mean, that, I want to make that clear. We, that is really what we're asking, to minimize the disruption for all of their students. Where there are life-changing, like things that come up, we are absolutely going to do our best to accommodate that. Where major things happen, and certainly we saw some of the messages back where, well, what if COVID changes? I, I thought we were clear in the message and if not, we should have teased that out further. If there is a change in the guidelines around how we're delivering instruction specific to the pandemic, we will absolutely revisit. We would love nothing more as educators to have all of our kids back in person, back in our classrooms at twenty-four and twenty-five, back to having them have P E, art, and music. We would love nothing more than that. But this is our reality right now. And I really think in the presentation coming up, you'll see, we have a lot of teachers doing a lot of great stuff and a lot of really happy kids in spite of pandemic education.
It's, it's my hope also with all the, with this, by giving people more time, that the movement will, will be minimal. And, yeah, so.
I just want to say, I, I think it's important that flexibility be something that people, um, can, 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 can use. And then I think, you know, you guys are trying to be as flexible as possible, but also we have to remember that we are here. And this, every, every week, as Dr. Robinson says, every week is a gift. And that we are appreciative that you guys are here and making it work. And I think you guys are going, I think our teachers are going above and beyond, um, to make that happen. So I think that we just, everybody has to work together. We are a community that, that, that works together and we need to remember that, especially now. We are in a situation that no one has ever been in. We've never done this and we're doing it. And I think that that's important to be mindful of.
Can I just make one more comment? Um, I'll be quick, I'm sorry. But I, 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 you know, I've listened to, I've talked to a few parents, I've seen the emails coming in, you know, I just, it's sometimes it floors me, even in the situation that we are in now, all the wonderful things that has been, that has gone on. The kids that are in school are doing well. The kids that are C V L, I hear, are doing well. The best that, the best of the situations that we could absolutely ask for, we're here. We're dealing, I'm looking at Becky Carmen, that deals, if we have a COVID positive, my God, I think twelve hours out of the day goes right to what's going on. We have dedicated staff here and they are doing a job that is unbelievable. And the, the anger that I see in the emails, um, the, the verbiage that's used, uh, the politicizing of it is just not needed. We, as Mrs. Miller just said, we are all in this together. We are sitting around in this room. We are in this together. The parents, the students, the administration, the board. There is nothing more, like they just said, that to have our kids back in these classrooms. So I, I'm saying this to everybody. I hope people that are listening, please, everybody just take a breath. We will get through it. It will be fine. And I hope nothing more than we can go back to a classroom. But we need to put the faith into the administration and the teachers that are, that have our children's best interests at heart. So I'm, I'm pleading with you as Dr. Robinson pleads for people to be safe every day, every weekend. Please, just give us that chance. Thank you.
Thanks, Mrs. Stevens. I, I, I appreciate the, the opportunity. I appreciate the board's comments and thanks, Dr. Robinson, clarifying that. And, and, and I, and I just want to say for, for, for my listening audience, sometimes people don't appreciate my passion and translate my passion to, to be something otherwise. And, and I, I have to tell people that there isn't a waking hour. And I can speak for myself and many people that don't go into trying to figure out how do we do this better? How do we take advantage of any situations, any opportunities to try to service and provide options for our kids? Period. Hands down. So, and I, and I really do hope people take that to heart and, and understand that their circumstances is, is their circumstance. And we're trying to consider every possible circumstances and come up with a plan and model to effectively do so. And I think Mr. Pressa said at last board meeting, you know what? Knock on wood, we're, things, the good things are happening and you're going to hear about some of those things tonight. Good things are happening and we're committed to make good things happen and we have a lot of good people working at it. So we will continue to work at it. Ask parents, provide us the feedback. If you think you're in a situation you can't, that's fine. But we want more information than not. We want to make decisions based upon information and not assumptions. And so that's simply what we're trying to do as we move forward. So I appreciate that very much. And related to people working hard, I just want to pause. Um, and the board members, in front of each board member is a, is a nice, um, food basket. Um, and, and people probably wondering what's that about? Um, this is, um, um, School Board Appreciation Month. And, and one of the things that, that, that we always want to do is pause to, to say thank you. Um, because unfortunately, I don't think we do that enough, right? We, we just run in from the one issue to the next issue and we don't pause long enough to say thank you and to show our appreciation to folks who find it not robbery, to commit their time. Um, and as a board individually, collectively, you guys put your time in. You put your time in. Um, you know, many of you this Saturday, in Saturday conversations virtually and, and representing yourself at events and, and all those type of things that you do. Um, and I want to say on behalf of the entire school community, thank you. Thank you for your, your tremendous service and as a small token of appreciation, um, for you just to say that we really appreciate you as a board for your guidance, personally superintendent, appreciate your guidance. And I appreciate your honesty. Your, your honesty, your willingness to engage in the, the, the hard conversations and, and to ensure that when we're saying to the public, we're being very sincere with our public. We're not trying to politicize and say things because it's, it's the politically popular thing to say or do, but simply doing the right thing is because of the right things to do. Someone say, thank you very much.
Well, thank you. This is very nice.
So please, please enjoy. Um.
Thank you.
And, and if I'll add, I think that we have to thank our families because they have sacrificed a lot just supporting us. And, you know, it's, it's, it's clearly an act of love. I mean, we do it because this is, um, where, where we want to be and we want to be helping and paying it forward. But our, but, um, and thank all of you for, all of my colleagues and Todd and Christina and Gary, Mr. DeLalo and Mrs. Rajad and, um, Mr. Gilbert, um, for their sacrifices as well. And I know that, that everyone would be here if they could. It's, 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 it's a tall order, but I can't imagine, I, I'm, I can't imagine doing anything else. This, this feels like the right thing to do. So thank you. You didn't need to do it, but we appreciate it. I definitely appreciate it.
Thank you. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna point to the screen here, um, and open a document that was shared with the board. And not a presentation. So, so for certain board members know, we've had for, for over a decade, um, a diversity committee for, um, the school district. And we have done a lot of things with some of it silent, some of it more visible. And one of the more visible things every year up until last year was our sensational, playing off the word sensational, sensational. Um, tremendous event to celebrate the tremendous diversity within our school community. Um, and this past, um, spring, summer, we were asked, um, by several students, actually, from the Student Senate and Grace, who's here as a board rep, student rep on the board. She was a part of that contingent of students who reached out and said, hey, um, the Senate would want, Senate wants to be more involved in this, which we, we were glad to hear because we've always had student representation, but student representation, we quite frankly, has been somewhat spotty, uh, over the years. And so it was great to know that the Student Government Group, um, wanted to saw the importance of this and fully embraced it. And to those students' credit, they put together a very comprehensive, um, document for us to reflect on. Um, and so, so as a result of that, our committee, which we have a committee that represents faculty, staff, um, community members, not as many as community members as we would like, but certainly one of those areas we're going to focus on to, to branch out. Um, I presented, shared with them the student ideas. And as a result, we made some modification to our committee charge, which is the document that's on the screen. So I'm just going to walk through a couple of highlights a little bit. Then I'm going to have, ask Mrs. Kissinger to come forward to share how we're going to operationalize certain components of the plan, so to speak. We have, um, Mrs. Hoffman is on, on the Diversity Committee as well as.
Mrs. Rajad.
Mrs. Rajad, who's not here now. So we have a couple of board members on the committee as well. So I'm just going to briefly talk through, um, this piece of it. Um, because the document is there for the board and the document is on the agenda for the public. And after, um, tonight, we'll also post the document, um, on the website so people can have access to it as well, um, publicly. So the charges is pretty, um, talks about, you know, where we are at a primitive point in history and how we as a school district, what are we doing to make the adjustment? And it's been an ongoing conversation with the Board of Education, um, for the past several months as well. So we talked about reimagining and the, the practical provisions of education, keeping diversity, equity, inclusivity in mind. And so, so, so really think about as we move forward, the conversation we just had now, virtual versus in-person. Huge equity issues that, that lands themselves, um, with, with that conversation that we have as a system has to, to take into consideration. So, so we looked at the committee charge, we modified the committee charge, um, um, somewhat to reflect those kinds of things. But this, the two bullet points I just want to highlight here is that, you know, the school itself, education itself, um, two different experiences you can have. It could be what it does to some. In other words, what it's, when I say what it does, it can disenfranchise, it can disengage kids. The educational experience can be very disenfranchising, very disengaging for kids, very discriminatory for kids if we're not paying attention. And if also what it does for kids, it can also perpetuate and facilitate opportunities and be the catalyst. So, so when you think about the same system could have profoundly different impact on students. And so I use that to, 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 to punctuate, if you will, the importance of the work that we're talking about doing here now. Because we have all these kids in the same system and experiences can be so different if we're not careful about assessing, monitoring what we're doing from those two vantage points, so to speak. And so, 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 so this, if you just wrap your head around that for a second, we're not talking about two separate systems. One system could have that very profound effect. And so how do we then mitigate that effect? If not totally eradicate that effect. So, so mitigate is, is practical, eradicate is ideal. Um, so, 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 so somewhere between those two is where we want to land. Um, and so, so, so when you think about that's where we want to, that's where we look at those kinds of things. The membership of the committee, we certainly, um, wants to have a very diverse committee, district-wide to have employees, students, community residents. We wanted to represent the diversity, the community, the cultures, the background, the backgrounds, the viewpoints of the committee. So, so we don't want this to be a committee of few. It's not a committee of few now. We have a wide variety of folks, um, um, on the committee, particularly with different, um, um, backgrounds and experiences that come to the committee. We want to expand that so we can make sure that we get those appropriate viewpoints. So when we look at those two different potential, um, impact points, we understand how those impact points could occur subsequent to how do we avoid those impact points as we move forward. So the committee membership is, is talking about everything that, the things that we've been talking about, um, discriminants, discrimination against race, class, sexual orientation, gender. We also then, this is a new piece that we really, really spent some time on, on what are the deliverables? We have great committees, because a lot of committees meet to meet. This is not a committee that meets to meet. This is a committee that meets to get stuff done. And so that's what Mrs. Kissinger is going to talk about a second. So we talked about then branching the work down into three components. And these three components are like very similar, familiar to the board. Because those are the three components of our district goals. The fourth is the fiscal piece. And the reason why that's important, because this committee just can't be a tag along, a side thought. This is something that, that embodies everything that we do as a system. Um, and so, 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 and the fiscal piece should be there too because we have a lot of focus on, on equity and resource distribution, um, as well. So, so hindsight in twenty twenty, I may very well go back and add that to, and I will go back and add that as a point of notation to this, that, that while this committee won't look at the fiscal piece of it, fiscal, uh, resource department is a, is a big piece of that as well. So we talk about cult, uh, curriculum instruction, we talk about everything from content, pedagogy, relationship, um, how do we measure success? Personal and professional, talking about who, who we hire, where do we crew, who do we hire, who do we train? All those kinds of things falls into that personal and professional, organizational culture. What are the social protocols? What's, what's culturally relevant? Um, uh, what are the provisions? What are the platforms that we provide for honest discourse? You know, how do we create those venues where, where people can have honest conversations? And, and one of the venues we've been doing and just, and it just went out recently, now we're picking it back up, the, the day of dialogue, doing it virtually, uh, doing a virtual day of dialogue. So, 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 and those are some powerful conversations that young people have with each other. And, and so, so how do we make sure that we can create the platforms and then just example that even in this virtual world that we live in right now, we're trying to do some of those things virtually as well and not saying, ah, we got to wait till post-COVID before we pick it back up. No, we're going to try to continue those things, um, as we move forward. So, so again, I'm not going to go through everything, but I just want to highlight some pieces of the board. So for each one of these, we spend some time to describe what it is and even some examples of some things that those committees or those subcommittees now, because we're going to break those down into subcommittees, working committees, the things they're going to do, that they can do, talking about multicultural curriculum, looking at those kinds of things. Um, development of educational, um, activities, um, looking at training for, 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 for instructors or for teachers or those kinds of things, um, looking at even grading practices. One of the big things we're dealing right now is, is grading, the equity piece to grading has been a huge issue for years. So we're trying to address some of those type of things as we move forward. Professionalism, again, the description of it and then some bullet points and potential takeaways. How do we make sure that we have, we have a great document called the Profile of a Shannon employee? How do we make sure that we're being true to that all the time? Not only when we hire people, but when they're on board, we're making sure that people are being honest brokers. That, that those wonderful characteristics that when we had Bob Pressa came on board with, that Bob Pressa is still demonstrating those great characteristics as an employee for us. And so how do you make sure that, that, that those things are, are, are fostered and, and supported and promoted as we move forward? Organizational culture, we talked about those kinds of things again. How do we make sure that the environment for school is one where, again, I use the term all the time, being honest brokers, that, that, that people could, I, I was going to say people, we don't necessarily have to be in agreement all the time, but we just have to be respectful of our respectful perspective because we grow. When you tell me something I didn't know, I grow from that. And, and, and another piece often says, and it's not mine, I got it from a great colleague of mine, Greg Owens, who did some training with us some years back, administrative training, he had a great mind. He said, once you know something, you don't unknow it, but if you know something else, now you got to make a choice. And that's a powerful thing when you think about it. So, so we talk about, you know, we're not telling people, you know, because a lot of the ways I am is because of how I grew up. So I'm not going to forget that, but as I grew up, I learned other things that I had, that, that compelled me to make different choices or provided me the opportunity to make different choices, two different things. Compel, I had no choice, right? And provide, I had a choice to make. And so, so, so when those kinds of things that we're talking about, and what's the organizational culture? How do we create that, that environment? And I know students already talking about trying to create different platforms to have those conversations virtually or otherwise as we move forward. So we, so we try to break this plan down then into sub, sub, subcommittees to make this an even much more vibrant and having this committee or subcommittees report back to this board, minimum it wants, ideally twice a year, to say, here's some things that we're doing. So you as a board, you're on board now, which you're also into as we move forward. So it's not a tag along thing. It's not a side thing. It's something that speaks to the core of our organization. And hence why those things are associated with the three, three to four goal areas of the school district. So before Lisa comes and, and talks about some of the subcommittee work, any, any questions that I can offer, a response to and clarify any further?
I just want to thank you for including a couple of words I think were, came from our conversations at the table. So you included eradicate.
Yep.
I, I think early this summer, the discussion was to, uh, attack racism. I, I, I personally like the term eradicate because there's often deeper roots than what you see, whether it be incidents that, that create anger or whether they're the subtle incidents. And I referred to that on a previous board meeting. You know, culturally, certain things come through in our language that sort of create a level of acceptance that make it much harder. And, and part of eradication is to really go through the process of confronting, verifying, then seriously eradicating things. So I like that word. It resonates extremely well with me. I like the use of a rubric. I, I, I think that, uh, one of the outcomes would be to look at how you can create a rubric for the types of students that hate intellectual bigots. And that's one of the concerns with a school like Shen. Because we have a lot of high achieving students that go on to great things, but if they're going to be, have bigotry in their mindset, how do we eradicate that? Um, so rubric on a employee, I think that's great. Rubric on what we expect of our students. And, and that's a challenge to put together. I think you can't do that in one day, but I think that is a challenge you can do within a year. That's one of those, maybe those two projects a year, that I think would be a, a really good way to build within a group of people. to build within a group of people, an exercise of how do, let's agree on what these steps are so that we can graduate people that are anti-racist, that can eradicate racism, and are just super smart and everything else. I think that's the type of kids we want to graduate. So I thought those comments would be worth bringing in, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Kishin, I'm moving this up here for you.
Good evening, hello everybody. That is a tough act to follow, Dr. Robinson. So I just wanted to chime in a bit with some of the operational details, how we're going to move forward, what we're going to do next. Now, Dr. Robinson talked about having these three subcommittees. Each subcommittee will be co-chairs, I think that's really significant. This is, this is difficult work. And having what I like to describe as that critical friend that goes on that journey with you as you lead this work that others will do is essential. So we've identified great leaders that we've tapped to do that. That sounds a little like I'm blowing on my own horn, because I am going to lead one of the subcommittees. But there are five other people that'll do great work with that. Dr. Wood and Mike Gutschel, who's, as you know, the associate principal, one of the associate principals of the high school, are going to lead the work of the Curriculum and Instruction Subcommittee. I think of their work as focusing on the what and the how our children are learning. So they have some pretty specific tasks to handle. They've been charged with developing some kind of process that could lead in an audit, that could result in an audit, so that we know what's really happening in our classrooms. That's one of the perpetual challenges of managing lots of people in lots of different spaces. So what are teachers teaching, how are they teaching? What is in our curriculum? What materials are students looking at and seeing? So all the, the work that you've seen and heard from the last few years from our elementary friends in the English Language Arts Program, those windows and mirrors, you hear about that when they talk about trade books. How does that extend K-12, what is happening in classrooms? Personnel and professionalism will be chaired by Erica Ryan and Malik Jones, two of our elementary principals. And their charge is really to work on the who works at Shen, not just in the classroom as teachers, our entire staff, right? So who are those folks that we entrust with our students to lead them, to, to be members of the society that we're all striving to create, where we have eradicated bigotry and racism? So they'll be doing things like helping us look carefully at our recruitment and retention practices. What professional learning opportunities are we providing to all of our staff, not just our teachers? And then the third group, and this is the group that I'm going to sub-chair with Becky Carmen, is the group that's going to look at the environment or the experience of our community. What is it like for us to, to work here? What is it like for our children to go to school here? Do we make a space at the table for everyone that comes into our community, that comes into our school district? The, the other significant piece of that work is to make sure that we are moving people from thinking of cultural characteristics or backgrounds as deficits that have to be overcome, switching how they think to assets that everyone brings with them in the situations they come into our school. So this subcommittee is the one that's going to work on making sure there's a forum for students and staff to address the needs of our community, developing social events that promote diversity and cross-cultural understanding, and assisting students and adults in relating better to those whom they view as different from themselves. You mentioned day of dialogue already. So that's a very concrete example of things that could fall under the subcommittee's purview. So I would just want to say that our work is cut out for us. This is, this is not small or easy or light, this is, this is a lift, this is challenging.
During a pandemic?
Exactly, in the middle of a pandemic with virtual opportunities everywhere we go. But it's not going to happen overnight, but all of us that are involved in this work are committed to it. The journey, the crucial conversations, the honesty, the reflection, and the growth that we know we will experience when we do this work, so.
That's awesome.
Yeah, we're excited. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I just, before I transition to the next thing, just want to put a, put a pin in that point.
Yes, see you Thursday.
Just want to put a pin in that point. Today, and I know that I think Mrs. Hoffman was on that call, I know Mrs. Carmen, Dr. Woods, several, we had a contingent of folks today on a webinar that was organized by Capital Region BOCs. And I was talking to Mrs. Carmen after the webinar to say, one, how many people are on it? Two, how did it go? And, and she was saying the X number, I was like, oh, it sounded like it was a great Shen opportunity. And, and, you know, so, so the, the significant point of that is this, and I said it to Mrs. Carmen. The danger is, unfortunately, a lot of people are using the COVID time as an excuse not to address the most salient issues that we need to be addressing with our schools. We're not at Shen. We're moving forward, we're bringing folks and exposing folks and, and, and challenging folks. And, 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 and as Mrs. Stevenson said on a couple of board meetings, helping people along on their own learning journey. And, and so, so, so while that conversation, that webinar was dominated by Shen folks, I'm good with that. And, and because not only am I using it to, to encourage our staff, employees here at Shen, but also quite frankly, we're going to use it to encourage some of my colleagues to say, we all have an obligation to our students to create the type of harmony in society that every person deserves and that our young people deserve to have as a part of their future. And so I share that with the board, somewhat feel like I'm preaching to the choir, but also to our public to understand that, you know, because I get the nasty emails. I get the awful racial emails, I get them. And, and, and I don't appreciate them, and I do understand the ignorance. And ignorance is the fuel to say, that's why we have to do more. That's why we have to do more, because for people to hate just because is just wrong. And so, so, so this work is beyond race, it's beyond ethnicity. It simply comes down to the fact that what type of society do we want to have? What type of society do we want our kids to, to live and learn and lead in? And I'm choosing one that, you know, and I'm looking at Grace as our student rep. I'm choosing one that Grace, as a young woman, can say, you know what? My future is limited only by my dreams. Only by my dreams, and not because of discriminatory practices that says, as a woman, you can't do this, so you shouldn't expect to do that. That's what this work is about. And I share that very publicly with folks, because I think sometimes people don't internalize it. It's bigger than any one of us, and it should be. And so, so it is a heavy lift, but it's a worthwhile lift, and we left it a little bit of time, a little bit of time and move forward, and everyone is on a different journey. Everyone is on a different journey, and we just simply want people to join. Join the journey, folks, there's something there that we can all gain and learn from, and it's not personal.
You know, today's, the, the, the webinar that, that we attended today, it could have easily have been two hours, because it, it's a conversation. Of course, they're providing, they're starting the conversation. But that, that process, you know, when we talk about eradicate, it's, it's, that is, that is way out there. We are way back here. And having that conversation, bringing everyone along, that's going to take a lot of time. But it, it, it's absolutely necessary, we cannot skip steps. We can't create checklists and say, okay, we're done, one and done. And you've said that before. But it felt like, so I, I've sat through a day of dialogue, and it felt like it was something on par with that for us. For adults, yes. Where we're, we're talking about, so we're connecting, we're, but sometimes it takes conversation, you have to be patient and, and let people make the connection. And, you know, the, the message of, we, we, we must go into this all on board with showing respect, being patient, knowing this is going to take time, and, and going in with, with that expectation, it, it changes the whole experience. It felt way too short. When, when we were done, I, I, I wasn't ready for it to be done. The conversations, you know, they had to put us in breakout rooms for certain, to, to answer certain questions. And there wasn't enough time for all the people in the breakout rooms to answer the question. But, but you wanted to hear their stories, you wanted, especially as they started thinking about their, you know, what, what it was when, when, when they first understood what racism was, things like that. It, you, there just wasn't enough time. So I was thinking, even as we left this, that we might want to find ways to, to have, you know, to, to grow this here, to provide more opportunities for others to have those same conversations. Because, like I said, I've sat through the day of dialogue, I, I did not want to leave. Once you, once you're part of that, you, you, you're now part of the, the community, you're not an outsider, what, you're not, it's, it's not entertainment for you, and I, and I, that's probably not the right word to use. But you're, you're part of that process, you're now part of the journey. And, and as soon as we get everyone, you know, that, that are also part of the same journey, I think we're going to be in a much better place. I, I understand the need for saying eradicate, but I, but I, but I, but I believe, forgive me for stuttering. I believe that where we're at right now is we're just trying to get everyone here and hoping that we'll, we'll educate, we'll teach, we'll all grow together. We'll be in a much better place where we're minimizing these very things that are keeping us from achieving our full potential, achieving, preventing us from, from reaching our dreams. So thank you for everything that's happening. The other thing that's pretty exciting about this committee is that there are many people on the committee that go back to other committees or go back to partnership teams. And, and you're now starting to see, it's, it's a topic on everyone's agenda. It's not something just isolated with one committee, and that's exciting to see too.
I am feeling a little left out, I would like to be on the committee.
You should come, you should, yes.
Don't worry, you can change, you can add your rights to it.
I think we should, I think we should, that's a really good point.
As a fellow of this, I appreciate that, thank you, I, I, thank you, thank you for, for this. So as Dr. Wood comes forward, I just want to spend some time. And again, you know, here we are sitting basically almost the end of October, week six into, into what's, at one point, we thought like, wow, how can we ever do this? And now we're week six in and excited for the next six months. And so we just want to walk through some stuff, so this is a deal is key, we're not, not a transition.
There are going to be, there's going to be a lot of flipping, there are a lot of pictures.
Yes.
So we had intended to do this regardless of whether we were talking about, you know, changing the trans or just to give an update as to how the reopening is going, gone, and the impact on the instructional provisions. And so this summer, as you all know, we were really awaiting, we had done some thinking ahead and looking at what other states were, were doing in terms of their reopening plans. But we were really waiting for the, the guidance documents in New York State. And once we had those, you know, it's like, oh my goodness, everything that we've known about school has to be examined anew. How we set up classes, the hallway directional flow. I mean, even getting into the school year, realizing like, wait a minute, we don't even have an attendance code for when students attend virtually, and they were supposed to be in school that day. And because we don't want to just mark them present, because if we have to contact trace, it's a lot of interviewing to find out, you weren't here, Public Health wants to know. We need to know, did you attend in person? Or were you attending at home, and there wasn't even an attendance code for that? And still, we have to do a workaround for that. I mean, the list, this wouldn't even begin to list out all the things that we've had to address anew. And it really led, is what led to the development and also what we've been implementing as the Shen reopening program. Our primary area of focus, you have to start somewhere. And the number one thing, we're, we're the health and safety practices, we continue to be, and center on social distancing. Social distancing has impacted so much of what we do with the day in, day out experience in the school. The number of students in each space, the number of spaces we're using for instruction, how we are allocating staff. Transportation was significantly impacted by the need to spread students out further. How we feed students, I mean, the flexibility of food service in terms of what we're doing with the provision of lunch. And we started off with the priority. And it was a firm priority in Shenonahua, and we were trying to make sure that other local districts had that same firm priority, that K-6 had the opportunity to be back in school every day. And, and we expanded that to K-6, knowing that many families were really counting on that. And our students learn best when they have daily contact, especially at the younger grades. And so what we developed was the K-5 in-person, students attending every day. And you see the percent of students, how they work out in terms of who actually comes in in person and who's completely virtual. Grade six is also in-person every day. And however, it's a little bit different, because the CBL students are completely virtual stream into the grade six classroom. And then 712 on days where we have, well, even if we have a four-day week, the students, as you know, last name A through L are here for two days. And then we have the virtual Wednesday where everybody's learning virtually, and then the M through Z for the majority of our school weeks. I already referenced the transportation changes. It even led to the change of school hours, like how we could bus everybody to get them here, and then asking parents to commit to driving their own children so that we really could plan. And then you'll see some of our little cuties and their experience. And some of them are just very heartwarming, especially after you went, you know, we went months without having our little ones in school and our big ones, and we actually get to, oh yeah, lots of cute ones. This little guy, oh, isn't that adorable? I know. Then we see some outdoor social distancing at Shatticon. I couldn't decide, I, I did actually delete some out, and I'm sorry, you wouldn't know, I guess, if yours had deleted out. But it was so hard to say, look at, look at this kid's drawing. Like, I can't draw that, how cute is that? Right, right? So amazing. Anyway, so elementary was truly an all-hands-on-deck. And when I say all-hands-on-deck, it was, you know, we've got the integration of the PE, art, music, ELA, EDK, AIS teachers as part of grade-level instructional teams. We created these completely separate CBL sections. And here you see, you know, here I am a teacher, and here's my class. So I was doing a quick count before, like, how many different students are here? I'm not sure what M is doing, I don't know if they have low bandwidth, the teachers that turn your, turn your camera off. If you scroll down to the next one, you can see one of our elementary teachers meeting with small groups of students in the virtual setting, and notice how she is trying to use two screens. She probably at some point is going to project an image on the one so that she can see what, what she's projecting, and also be able to see the faces to, to monitor engagement as we go. You're well aware of the fact that we implemented a new learning management system. There are also other changes that happened behind the scenes, because we really struggled last spring without having elementary emails. And these are not, you know, kids cannot email out to other people, they cannot get emails from outside coming in. This is a very tight network between the teacher and the students at the elementary level, but it allows, when a teacher posts something in Google Classroom, for the students to be notified that the teacher has put something in Google Classroom. It was extremely challenging last spring. There was no great communication between the teacher and the students, it was going to the parents. And, you know, for a variety of reasons, that was just not ideal. So the system is monitored 24/7. The students are receiving digital citizenship training, so, but a lot of, a lot of changes. Also at the elementary, looking at reducing the number of shared supplies, how we're cleaning in-between use, how we're letting items sit for a period of time between use. We're rethinking the delivery of small group instruction. We're going to be talking more about that, because a lot of teachers are asking, how am I doing this? We've got teachers right now trying to do small individual Google meets from their desk. And then, because the kids will be talking, sorry, I feel like I'm going to sneeze. The kids will go into the hallway with their Chromebooks so that they can talk without disrupting their classmates, while the teacher's on a Google meet with the kids in the hallway for small group instruction for an extended period of time. Like, a lot of creative solutions so that we can maintain social distancing, we can do the, the learning six feet apart with our masks on, or if it's for a shorter period of time, it can be in a more confined space. But we're usually saying 10 minutes or less. Obviously, the special areas, PE, art, music are being provided virtually district-wide, so those are being sent out and posted in either Google Classroom or CSOS, so that students are doing it, because the school day has been shortened. And we did, we were able to keep recess as part of the in-person school day. At the middle school, high school, as you're well aware, we implemented the block schedule, really to, we think it's a, it's a great instructional model. As you know, we'd been spending about two years working toward a shift to a block schedule. This was not an attempt to try to get it in early. We were really planning for that for '21, '22. However, the idea that it's a quality delivery model and we could reduce the number of contacts daily for both teachers and students, it really ended up being the, the best system that we could put in place during a pandemic. Grade six, having students in-person daily, it is both state, space and staffing intensive. I could go on and on about that, I've got a meeting with the middle school folks next week to talk about what we're going to do at the semester break for grade six, because we are very tight on space at the middle school and have really had to make some additional investments there as well. So, but it, but it's going well, and parents are so grateful to have their sixth graders back every And parents are so grateful to have their sixth graders back every day because it really is an age where many folks are not comfortable leaving their children home alone. So it's been a sacrifice. It's been a challenge, but I think well worth it. Grade seven, 12, in-person students are on that hybrid model. And then our completely virtual learners, as I've already mentioned, are just part of the classroom rosters. We also implemented virtual Wednesdays. So in weeks where we have a five day week of instruction, we have virtual Wednesdays where students are logging in grades seven, 12 remotely. It's a slightly compressed day to allow teachers to have time to do some professional learning, and they need it. They need the time. Everything about what they've typically done has changed, and everything has to be digitized. So where you would previously have some of your things on your computer and in your files, now there is no, oh, I can pass out this packet and then I can put in Google Classroom where they're going to put their responses. Now it's, I've got to go back and find where that, you know, written document was, or I've got to scan it in and I've got to get it into Google Classroom. Everything, because every single section at the secondary level has students who are completely virtual. So there is no, oh, I've got the in-person section. I don't have to worry about that. And even if they didn't, they, with the hybrid model, they have some who are there certain days and some who are not there other days. The amount of tech support that has been required to support teachers. I'll tell you, I had lived it firsthand. Yesterday, I taught the year three teachers, so they're in year three in the district, as part of their new teacher induction through Action Research. Worked on a Google Classroom. I was presenting my screen. I was trying to use breakout rooms and Jamboard. And then at the very end, after we have some quality learning for about an hour, I say, okay, now I need feedback from all of you on what I can improve as a user of technology to deliver. And some of them were very gracious to me, but they absolutely gave me feedback on how I could have improved. And our teachers are experiencing the same every day and want to learn and want to be better, as do I.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
So if they're using those Wednesdays for extra, you know, extra help for themselves to become better digital people, what happens when a teacher is, you know, giving, 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 giving all day and working on those, working with their kids, C V L or kids who are at home or whatever? How do they, I'm not really sure how to ask this question. How did they feel like they're getting supported through the week minus those Wednesdays? Is that a clear question, I guess? I mean, are they able to?
It is a clear question. So one of the things, one, we didn't want virtual Wednesdays to be a can everybody do it this way. And I think Eric Edison, who's one of our teachers, said it very well. And he used me as an example when we had this conversation. He's like, Dr. Robinson, you're the person who gets up at 3:00 in the morning and does work. You may not want to do your 3:00 in the morning work at 12:00 in the day. You may want to use that 12:00 time to connect with kids otherwise. So we want some flexibility to say, if I want to connect with kids because of some stuff on work in the line, I want to be able to do that. And if I want to do some other stuff at 3:00 in the morning, that's fine, too. So we created that flexibility to say that, yes, professional development is important and connecting with kids is important. And that will vary based upon quite frankly where you are. Because you might be in the midst of introducing a new lesson, and you say, guess what? We need to spend a little more time on this Wednesday than some other Wednesday. Or you might be yourself learning something, and you say, I need to definitely commit the time to do it. So we want to create that opportunity so professionalism reigns, that people understand that the day is a productive day. Because if a teacher is better at his or her craft, that teacher is better with kids when, with kids again. And so we know it's an investment regardless to improve the overall process. We wanted to not have it so lockstep that God shall only do this during these hours versus recognizing that people at different points have different needs. And also, people work in different places, different situations. Like personally myself, I would be the person like, you know, let me connect with people when I can. I'll do the other stuff on my own because that's how I work best. So we want people to have that opportunity to do that as well. So that's how some people get into that. But we want to give them the opportunity in case they need it, that's the only time they could get it, here's the time to take advantage of it. And is that kind of like, I think that's where you go with your question.
I think so. And I'm also wondering if they're feeling supported, if they're feeling like they're getting that, those needs met. It may be an unfair question. I don't know.
It probably depends, right? When you've gone in and you think you're all set and you think you've designed this great lesson and the tech collapses, right? Or you think, you know, you lose your Google connection, whatever it is, right? You can, you could have felt perfectly supported and prepared up until that point, and then it's not, you know? It probably ebbs and flows with you get to a unit and wow, I had done most of this in Google already, so now this is an easy conversion for me to put up. And, you know, I know we're talking secondary, but at the elementary, it's a real challenge for our elementary teachers to create all this, all these elementary-based things because the kids go through them so quickly. So we're really encouraging them, as we are K 12, to share with your colleagues. Like, you've got to divide up, and you're going to create this, and you're going to create this, and you're going to share across because we've got to maximize our efforts here.
If I could add, it provides some flexibility that is just, the system doesn't have a lot of room for error. And that storm that was five minutes is proof of that. It pulled us offline, and even if you had a generator, you probably didn't have Wi-Fi. And so these small deviations really throw us off. And so having that Wednesday, even though we've had now several Monday holidays that take the Wednesday away, but just having that provides just a little bit of welcome and a pressure, you know, release opportunity. That's how I see it, and we need that.
Absolutely. And we want to encourage teachers creating great block plans because it leads to increased engagement for students, right? It's a win-win for everyone. We are also really pleased that at least some of our interscholastic athletics were able to be back in, happening. Our J V and our varsity, we have 350 athletes competing now in nine sports. And we have to say, so far, it's been going really well. We just, you know, you put your best plan together and you cross your fingers, you really hope, and we are seeing some amazing things, and kids are happy. They're just so grateful to be back as our families, as they sit on the sidelines with their masks, and they're really doing a great job following the rules and wearing the lanyard and.
Now we have the links, so streaming.
Exactly. Now we have the ability to stream, which is, so the other folks can watch, which is fantastic. All right, we have a number of areas of continued focus. We were just talking about the technology, virtual learning implications. This is going to be ongoing throughout this year. It's going to be for the rest of our careers because technology isn't going anywhere, but the learning curve right now is so steep. And so learning how to connect with students at home and in school simultaneously. You know, we're hearing reflections from some of our teachers who are just top-notch saying, oh, my goodness, I realized I didn't ask a single question of the students at home today in that block. You know, like their reflections on what they want to be doing better in this process. How to have students connecting, students who are in the classroom connecting with the students who are at home, so forming a community. Setting up small group meetings, as I had previously mentioned. Supporting students who are accessing various platforms from home. So sometimes it's great to say, all right, we're all in Google Classroom, but now you're going to go into Think Central, or you're going to go into Go Math, you're going to go into Reflex Math. And what that looks like to you as a student may be different than how the teacher sees it on that end, and to give the exact instructions on how to get there can be very complex. And I mentioned supporting teaching in a block. You know, another area of continued focus is grading students. We, as Dr. Robinson mentioned earlier, we were already underway to shift to a trimester for this year. You know, last September, we were having conversations, and Erica Ryan started leading the charge at the elementary level, working with teachers to do the shift to a trimester, which is actually proving to be great in this year. However, we've got, that's not the only place where we really need to reflect on our grading practices. It is not easy where many teachers have done multiple choice tests for years, and now we have some students who are never in person. And how are you assessing the learning of that, right? So this is an opportunity to move to really authentic forms of assessment, moving to authentic forms of assessment, like write a reflection and I'll grade that. Or write about how this could be a real world application. Or do a comparison between, these things are much more time-intensive to grade. And they're also, they don't apply as easily to a zero to 100 point scale. What is the difference between an 88 and an 89? What is the difference between an 81 and an 82? The inter-rater reliability questions that go along with this. And so there are, and we've known, really some quality grading practices out there. And there's an example here that we've put out for teachers as, consider using something like this. So this is from a teacher lens. There's also a student version of it because we really want students to focus less on the grade and more about the learning. It's not so much about the grade I was given, it is the quality of the learning. Though, when we can program our students that way, though, that is the lifelong success journey. That is not the, I get a token for doing something exactly as somebody else told me how to do it. We would much prefer that there be true learning and, and how, like, the idea that a student could ask a question that demonstrates an application of a concept across a variety of contexts, that's amazing. Such a higher level skill than I took, you know, 20 multiple choice questions and I got a 100 on that. That is not transferable to anything, nor does it describe the behaviors that you acquired as a result of your learning. So there is so much that can happen here. If you really get into it, there's a lot surrounding conversations of equity in terms of grading practices. We are growing in this area, but right now, teachers see that it is challenging to grade in this virtual environment, especially when you're administering something where some are in front of you and some are at home. And really finding that this rubric has a lot of potential, and it's, I would say, durable potential. It's something that when you learn it and you really get into it, you think, wow, this is probably what we should have been doing all along. Why were we ever trying to be so granular in something that really should be describing learner behaviors and being much more motivational for students as opposed to feeling like it's done to them?
Dr. Wood, can I ask you a question on this? So you've had, you've presented this in the past and explained this. Is, but you just mentioned that this is something that's, are they given an option? Are all teachers using this or some teachers are and some teachers are not?
Teachers are, they know the grading practices that they have. It is a hard shift. So, you know, for me, 48 years of knowing 100 point scale or however, from age five on, that's how I was graded all through K 12 and then into college. And then I started teaching, right? And I replicate those patterns, and it takes a very long time. It's like why our parenting looks a whole lot like our parents' parenting in many cases, unless we make a really active attempt to do something different. It's the patterns that we fall into because it makes sense to us. It fits our schema of what grading should look like. We have a number of teachers who, for the last five years, have been very interested. Once they start getting out and getting some professional development, say, oh, that's really interesting. I would love to, you know, move that. So we have a number who are trying it out, but we have it here as an option for teachers.
Okay, so for the ones that are trying it out, I can see how someone might be concerned that there's going to be, especially high school, and it's all working towards your final GPA. So what would you say to those teachers? Are you seeing a big difference? You're not. You're seeing, it's for the most part on par with the old grading system, except it's more focused on outcome. It's more focused on.
Yeah, absolutely. And the reality is teachers have used rubrics forever, especially grading writing or like the written essay pieces of the Regents exam have always been graded on a rubric. So it's more just expanding its use as opposed to having it completely new and novel.
And I think you did explain it, the last time this was covered at a board meeting, that it goes right into the portal and the numbers are updated. And so you're still given an average. You still have individual, but you're given, yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, so the intent is to have some teachers try it now, and then those teachers will come back and they will, they will help educate or?
Put it out there for teachers to say, if this is an area that is a challenge for you, knowing how to handle students at home, students in the classroom, depending on what your assessment structure is, here's another thing that you could use that may be a useful resource to you while we work in this completely new and novel environment.
Right, okay. Thank you.
So another, obviously, continued area of focus is the impact of COVID and contact tracing, isolation and quarantining. I think maybe Mrs. Stevenson, you referenced the amount of time Mrs. Carmen, our COVID coordinator spends on this. And it's significant, and it impacts really the entire administrative team for periods of time each week. Planning ahead, this was written before the email went out yesterday, and we got some feedback from parents, the potential for shifting of the enrollment at the elementary. Another area of ongoing planning is the potential to pivot. We hope we can stay in session, but there may come a time where we have to say we are going all virtual for a period of time, and we have to be ready. And we are more ready in certain places than we are in others. Like our in-person K five have the luxury of not really having to do a lot of that digital piece. So making sure that they are ready to transition in the event of that is a continued priority. Ongoing support for teachers and making sure that we are embedding social emotional learning because we do know that in some of our classrooms, the affect is somewhat flat still. Students are still adjusting. They're happy to be here. Many wish they were here more, but the masks and the distancing, you know, I think I heard one teacher say she was so happy to have to correct a student. Like, we are seeing much more compliant behavior. And we'd like to see for some of them a little more joy and excitement. You know, I think that they're trying to be so careful and follow the rules so tightly that we believe a little more social emotional learning will help.
Can I ask a question on that? Is this part of the district, you know, one of our district goals, the social and emotional learning? I'm wondering how, what are we doing for social emotional learning for our staff?
So we are trying, and it's so hard to say because we're, you know, expansive. There is no one right answer. I can say, leading off for an admin meeting last week, I broke us into groups and we reflected on articles, but they were articles on showing patience as a leader and showing resilience as a leader, right? So then there was an opportunity for everybody to talk among each other and reflect on how they're able to apply what they've learned in their work. And it was really just, it was half learning, it was half social, but it's that connection with other people in a time where we can feel isolated and also me trying to try out some tech skills on them. But I do that also to model, right? Because I want to make sure that they are trying that with their departments or their school faculty and making sure that we have time to work and spend time together. But it is happening. It's just happens in different ways. So I wouldn't be able to give one specific answer because one elementary school might do one thing and another might be doing something different. But it is, it does remain on our radar that we need to support students and adults.
Yeah, agreed. Thank you.
Can you explain this slide, why this is important?
You see how our students are seated and you see these nice little X's here? These mark the spots because we are advanced, so we want to be a nice, healthy distance.
When they're having lunch.
When they're having lunch, right? When they're having lunch.
That's why I make sure that people are seated and think that kids are sitting there all the time.
That's right. Hopefully, you saw the sandwich wrapped up in front of the student.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think I rolled right into the next.
So we're quick to go to this and recognize that we want to make sure that we have time for Mr. President to walk through the goal resolutions because it's important. Actually, the board, so we're quick to walk through this slide if you don't mind.
Yeah, I can actually get most of it just from the front cover. We held a number of virtual summer programs, and it was great. We were able to hold one in-person program, which is our special ed program, which laid tremendous groundwork. And we saw the success was possible with the return to school in person. We had, we even had learned, like, going back to the summer literacy support being virtual, what we learned in the spring, our teachers were able to turnkey into a more successful virtual summer program for summer literacy support. Same for our E N L program. Middle school, high school, we were really talking about how to engage students who, many of those students who ended up in middle school, high school, summer school had failed to engage in a virtual environment in the spring. So we spent a lot of time talking about how do we get them connected and even putting an additional counselor in the program in the summer to try to make connections so that students wanted to join, so that they felt like there's something in it for me beyond just academics and earning my credit. But somebody cares about me, is looking out for me, and I want to be there to earn my credits. And then I mentioned special education programming, tremendous successes in bringing students back in person. Very disappointed not to have Shen Summer Adventures, really hoping that that's, you know, just a one-year thing. We will see, we were able to hold virtual summer academy for educators, virtual curriculum development, tremendous amount of work went in over the summer to make sure that all of these programs were a success. And if you look through the packet, you'll see who the leaders of each of the programs were, who put their heart and soul into making those programs a success. How's that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just want to briefly go into a lot because we have a lot more conversations about this moving forward. Um, but sort of board is aware, we're starting to have budget conversations, believe it or not, um, which is an interesting dilemma considering the realities of what's happened at the federal and the state level, and how it impacts us. But again, board has seen this. This one is just for the purposes that we, this is our traditional process, um, that we didn't follow last year because last year, development was a very non-traditional vote process as well as a result of executive order in terms of the timing of the budget vote and things of that nature. But we still follow an opportunistic process. So, right now, we are pretty much here. We're gonna be talking about the budget calendar with the board, and then we start having some conversations. And then, end of November, I'm gonna start sharing some assumptions and expectations with the board, kind of talk about the direction. And quite frankly, a lot of it's gonna be continued upon where we are with our current models. So, you know, the whole notion of planning for the current model we have, planning for what could be a model, uh, is gonna be a interesting piece of it. So, so the more information we have as we plan forward becomes important as well. So, as you see the process, process actually goes by pretty fast. Sometimes people don't realize that because the month of November and December, quite frankly, between the holidays, it's not a lot. Then we jump back into January, because when we really start doing a lot of analysis and being able to by the end of February and March, have numbers to share with the board. We hope that the state will have, we're hoping that honestly, by first part of December, January, we have some sense of where the state's going. Hopefully, the state has some sense of where the feds are going. There's a lot of conversation right now about federal stimulus funds, and depends where that goes, it's gonna impact state. So, we're watching all those things very closely. So, again, just want to share with the board so you know that, that we're going to, as much as we can, follow our process, recognizing that we saw last year, we had to pivot very quickly as a result of the executive orders from the governor in terms of the, the budget vote. So, the process is starting as we speak. I'm under the feeling, any questions on, on that at all? But just, this is our first blush to say.
Yeah.
Budget is on the agenda. There we go. It happens very fast. Um, and so, so, so again, there's a lot of great stuff we shared with the board tonight. It was important for the board, I think, to understand a lot of the context, and I think Dr. Wood's presentation. And as I said, ironically, this was planned two weeks ago for us to have this presentation tonight on the update on, and it goes with that conversation we had before about some of the emails. And, and, and I do recognize that there will be some people who, quite frankly, are probably even more peed off tonight as a result of our conversation here than not. And it's not a disrespectful comment to say, say that. It's the realities of it. We really are trying to plan elementary for over four thousand kids and secondary for almost six thousand kids. And, and in a lot of moving parts, and, and the best, the more information we have, the better we can plan forward. And, and that's all we're trying to do. So, hopefully, people understand and appreciate that, um, and knowing that, that our track record shows for itself. And, and I, and I think I can boldly say that we have done a lot of great things for kids in the past. We're doing a lot of great things for kids right now, and we have all intention to continue to do great things in the future. So, so for all those who think that we don't have the best interest of kids in mind, far from the truth. Does it infringe on people's unique individual circumstances that possible to exist? I can't comment on that because I don't know those circumstances, but we're just simply trying to get information to plan forward. And people say they can't provide that information right now, we, we'll assume default that your situation is gonna continue as we move forward. So, again, thank you for the time, Mrs. Stevenson.
Okay, yeah, hopefully, you can click on, hopefully, you can click on the link and it will show up.
So, I made your presentation. I have your presentation.
Yes, yes. So, I put this together. This is a compilation of the, uh, the documents I circulated last month. Go to the second page.
Yeah, I'm just trying to see something for a second.
I click on the next page, the left column, just click that on.
Yeah, um, hmm, let's think this thing.
You would dance?
No, I don't know why I saved it like that. Mrs. Stevenson, help me here.
Send this image, not-
Yeah, no.
Um.
Yeah, I just saved, I saved what you sent to me.
Okay.
Kelly, you have a second?
(laughing)
So, you sent, can you-
Can I try to resend this?
Send it to Kelly's email.
Then I don't know how to do.
What's the matter?
So, Bob sent this presentation, but he sent it as an image, not necessarily as a presentation. I'm trying to figure out how would we open this.
Did you just send it to my email?
I don't have, Bob has it.
I have it here. Um, so, I go to-
Can you show him, Kel, show him how to send it to the email?
I have this document here.
Yep.
And how do I, right click?
What is it? Is it a PowerPoint?
It's a sheet from down here. I think that's a sheet. That's a sheet right there.
I'm just looking at this. It's a PowerPoint, right?
No, it's, what's that? It's entitled "Presentation, Google Slide."
Okay, yeah, it's Google Slides. So, if you just email it to me.
I don't know how to do that. I don't do that.
Oh, where is this?
It's on my drive. Um, this Google Drive.
So, go to your email.
Mm-hmm. Compose.
You want that?
DEF Cal, D-E-F-E. And then attach. Yep. And then find it where it is on the drive.
Right there.
Is that it?
I think so. Uh, today at eight thirty-three, so yesterday, eight oh three, so this-
Yep.
Would it be this one or this one? Uh, let's try that.
I think this one is the, the slide. That's the, um, it's not that.
Does that work? Would that work?
No, that's still a, that's a photo of the slide.
Yeah, it's, yeah, that's what I have.
Bob, can you just speak to it?
Yeah.
Can you speak to it?
Speak to it, yes.
(laughing) Okay.
Sorry.
Sorry, Bob.
No problem. Uh-
Can you see it?
I, I can see it on my screen.
Yeah, that's all right. Can you speak to it?
Yeah, so I, I, it's about thirty, thirty resolutions. Um, we're breaking them down into, it's high impact to us, uh, also whether the, uh, the NISBA group agreed that that should be part of our lobbying plan, or said no, or are gonna drop it from our lobbying plan. So, the first, I think, six of them are the high-impact items. And why this is important is, um, if we're looking at where we want to spend a lot of time, particularly in March, when we go in front of the, the folks in the state assembly, you know, what do you want to talk about with that limited amount of time? You, you can't go after everything. If you go to them with a laundry list, they're just gonna see you as another person with a laundry list. You really have to, you know, condense what's really important to you. So, based on the feedback, and the chart does have feedback, a couple of these, I ca- I, I declared not, uh, to not concur. So, for example, the first one, and this was from Dr. Robinson's feedback, the first one advocates, uh, fixing the testing system. Well, you know, we've always been wanting to do that in the state. Um, this is really not a good year to bring that forward. Um, there's a lot of federal regulations that need, that are impacted, that, that people just are not gonna want to fix, and it's just not, not something that I think lends itself well this year to go and advocate for. Uh, subsequent years, we can do that. There are two other items that are, what we consider high-impact that we really want to advocate for, which is online learning and, uh, addressing the digital divide. I think that's probably where we're in an environment where there's going to be a lot of things around us, uh, both within state education and, and private sector that say, that's really what you want to spend your time on. You can see, that's what we talked a lot about tonight. So, that's something that I think are, are great resolutions that are very timely and, and, and well worth spending time on. Uh, there were two in this group that involve special education, and they really speak to the balance between individual parents, bringing a situation forward to the district. And based on Gary's feedback, I declared the second one, uh, number three, was a second incident of not concur. Because Gary said, you know, what, what you're advocating in number three is that you're shifting the burden of proof in a special education due process away from the district and onto the party selecting relief. Typically, that could be a parent, somebody of, of, of low income. Um, he thought that was a little bit too aggressive, whereas resolution number two is more, I think, balanced. Uh, what that does, it, uh, it says it's easy for the district to recover attorney's fees in legal cases related to special education. The district is the prevailing party. So, so both of these speak to the fact that there are, and we've seen them here at the board table the last couple of years. You know, we have a parent out there that says, I absolutely must have this, and it doesn't align with our programs, doesn't align with what we're trying to do, and it doesn't align with the state says it is an acceptable amount of support for a special needs student, and they'll just keep asking. And they'll appeal, and they'll keep appealing. And at a certain point, that's gone the direction of way too far, because really, we want to have every kid to reach their full potential. And I think we're doing it for almost every kid coming through here that's a special needs student. And we've seen that with some of the surveys we've done, and I just sort of sensed that from talking to a lot of parents in this category, that, you know, we are doing a very good job here. And I think districts across the state struggle with it because I think from their perspective, they could be derailed by one or two advocate, you know, advocating parents that are just not gonna stop. And so, you have to balance that out. How do you support everybody, and, and sometimes you can't support everybody perfectly. So, tho- those two are kind of aligned. I declared number three of not concur because that goes a little bit too far on behalf of districts over, over individuals.
Can I add something to that?
Sure.
I definitely agree with Gary, um, um, on three, but I believe the same argument can be made for two. Because it, 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 the, the effect would be to unfairly burden families or discourage families that are economically disadvantaged from bringing something forward. So, that is my concern with two.
Okay. Uh, possible non-concur. If you want, that, that's good feedback. All right. Um, and then I think there's-
It really puts, well, it's the same with the burden of proof.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, with three, so.
Okay. Um, and there's one more in here, number eighteen, and that really addresses the need to, to figure out the funding. Okay, I think we all would agree. If you're looking, what do we really want to go to bat, you know, with a limited amount of time? Sometimes you go there with a sheet of paper that has four things. I think there's really three things. Really focused on online learning, (inaudible) the digital divide, uh, fixing the money issue, and, uh, I think balance in the special education arena where, um, not overdoing it on behalf of districts, allowing, you know, the, the natural give-and-take where someone can ask for more or declare what they want, but not really making it something that a person could potentially derail the work of the entire, of, of the whole programs in certain districts. And I think that's where there's sort of a message from other districts. They want to avoid that. So, um, hopefully, that clears the first slide. Those are high-impact, and those are ones where I had to declare as not concur. Next two slides are ones that I call medium-impact. Um, these are areas where I think we could put a couple non-concurs in. Uh, one of, and, and I, you can see on the feedback in that column to the right, uh, one of them involves unf- potential unfunded mandate. That's number seven. Uh, and on the s- uh, fourth page, part two of medium-impact, there were two involving special education meetings and hearings, and that would be fifteen and nineteen. And I think those, you have to be sensitive to the fact that, you know, you, you want to educate people to advocate, but you also don't want to create unfunded mandates around that. And I think these are types of things that would probably be mess-managed by a, you know, committee in the legislature figuring this out the right way, going through their process. So, I, I, I'm sort of lukewarm about, you know, really pushing hard for both. I see there kind of a, a need to balance, you know, in that, in that space.
So, so the one with the pre-K, I, that one I find odd because is K mandated? K funding?
Not by law.
Not by law?
That's number seven.
So, so why would you do the pre-K?
Uh, because some districts want it. You know, some, you know, one district out there said, I, I, I'm want, I want to have that directed towards me because I need it, and they're trying to put it into, well, an advocacy position. Do we want to support that? You know, it, it, in our case, we don't have pre-K for every student here. We have it for some special needs students. Do we want to tie that into our funding? You know, we're, we're paying for it now. It seems to, we're, we're holding it together along with everything else we do. So, I didn't consider that something that, that we really have to oppose or take a strong position on.
Yeah, I just think it's odd if, if you don't have kindergarten mandated to then propose something like that for pre-K. But, yeah, so I think we're in agreement.
All right.
Well, if we're not going, kind of going against our-
No, no, no. No, 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 it's different. It's different from full-day kindergarten. It's, it's the funding for kindergarten. So, so one's not mandated already.
Okay.
And then they're asking for pre-K to be mandated. So, it's a little bit different argument.
Okay, so, that's three and four. Those are the medium ones. And then on slide five, uh, wanted to speak to what NISBA said not to approve. And I didn't see a problem with any of these. Um, so, one was redundant, one was more, uh, they had two involving, uh, healthcare funding, and, and really, NISBA said, uh, you know, that, that's more of a national issue, not something we really can do with the state right now. And the last item is number six, which I called just low-impact remaining resolutions. These are more, you know, administrative communication-type things. I, I don't think this is something where we need to take a strong advocacy posi- advocacy position. There's probably somebody who can bring, uh, you know, some type of communication at the right time to a specific committee to try to add something in, to try to make it better. I think it's good that that's documented, that NISBA can, can bring that forward. But I don't see that as something that's really, you know, prescient to what we need to be doing, what we need to be talking about. Um, so, I, I really think the crux of the matter is slides two, three, and four, especially two. You know, where do we spend our time? Where do we want to turn to somebody either, uh, emailing to elected officials or talking to them when we go visit them in March and say, this is the really important stuff. This is what we really want to talk about. Um, so that's how I see it shaping up. I look forward to your feedback, particularly if you would concur or not concur. I've got one from Naomi that we'll look at, um, and proceed similar to what I talked about.
Yeah, it really didn't, uh, I, it really didn't change from where we started.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we've got some feedback, but, but really, I mean, I think that's more a testament that the NISBA group that reviews this during the summer had it, uh, you know, put a lot of thought into it. Um, also, we want to be thinking about after March is what do we want to advocate next summer? What positions do we want to take? Um, and we'll worry about that in March.
(laughing)
Bob, thank you for taking the time to pull this together.
Yeah.
Thank you, Bob.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
So, um, at this point, if anybody has any topics they, they want to bring forward, um, you know, I, I told you I dedicated myself to, uh, learning more, um, and on, uh, mulch- multiple diversity, culturalism, anti-racism. So, Dr. Robinson has given us some, uh, more continuing that. Thank you so much. Um, you know, and I was reading this one that he did give us, unlearning racism. And with Dr. Wood talking about it tonight, it reminded me, because the whole beginning of it is, we're not born like this. We're not born hating each other, right? We don't know the color of skin, or sex, or religion, or anything like that. So, I don't know, as we go forward to a focus on our elementary, K through five, um, the younger learners too, that we don't forget that, you know, we want to focus on some of the, on tho- on that population as well.
So, I mean, there, Mrs. Kissinger did share some of like the Windows, um, you know, the, with the curriculum, there, there is an effort, but I don't think there's something equivalent to like the day of dialogue.
Right, that's what I mean.
Which is where I think you're coming from, right?
Yeah, yeah, so.
But, you know, what, what I was also saying is that it would be good for us to, so the links are very good. The, um, a lot of the videos are, are excellent videos. But I think also the conversation is necessary to, we, we need to connect. We need to, uh, that, that needs to happen at some point. So, it's all necessary. It's, it's like I said, there's no skipping steps here. There's, yeah, we're gonna-
You're in, you're in.
You're in.
You're in.
Absolutely.
We're in.
Yes.
We're in. Okay. So, does anybody else have any thoughts for tonight on any other topics that they want to talk about? We had a pretty deep meeting. Uh, Todd, is there anything that you would like to talk about?
Uh, no, I, we addressed all of the, uh, comments, or we're talking about the, uh, the virtual, so I'm good, thank you.
Okay. And also for Vanessa taking minutes, um, so, we didn't, we were, we are missing Todd is virtual tonight for personal reasons. Christina is, is, uh, not here tonight for personal reasons, and Gary is, um, absent as well for the personal medical reasons, so. Okay, so, at this point, I'd like to, uh, take a motion to adjourn. Naomi, Gus the second. Naomi's first, Gus the second. All in favor? Todd, you good?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I lost the cap tonight.
Okay.
I come to call. I lost the cap tonight. I come to call.